Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission meeting, August the 4th, 2020. We'll go with the roll call. Ms. Mies.
Present.
Ms. Henderson.
Present.
Mr. Harker.
Present.
Mr. Horn. Mr. Stowe.
Present.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Haymore.
Present.
And myself. Let the record show a seven present, one absent. Will everyone please stand for a moment for five remain standing for the pledge of allegiance Thank you, all citizens of the United States, for joining me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. No one has signed up as anyone here did not have opportunity to sign up to wish to address the commissioners on anything other than what's on the agenda. Doc will approve the approval of the agenda. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Haymore, the agenda be approved. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion's passed, seven four, one absent, no zero against. Approval of the minutes, July the 7th, 2020 minutes. Motion, please.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented. I mean, minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Ms. Mies, minutes be approved as presented in the package. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, seven four, zero against, one absent. Chairman's report. We are honored tonight to have two of our supervisors with us. I'd like to recognize Mr. Bob Warren and Mr. Rod Skyes as the chairman and vice chairman and supervisors. And also, we have with us tonight, Mr. Harold Garson. He is a member of the Danville Planning Commission, and he is working on being certified with the state, and it's one of the requirements that I had to go through, and I'm sure he's doing, that he attends a meeting. So we certainly want to welcome and glad to have you. Thank you, sir, for being with us. Ms. Mies, I'd like to welcome, thank you again for being reappointed for four more years.
Thank you.
And we certainly appreciate the work that you do and the support you give, not only to the Callens, Gretna District, but all the citizens of Pennsylvania County, and glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for those kind words. And if I may have a minute, I'd like to thank you for your guidance and direction through the years to help me when I needed help. I know your phone number real well. Also, want to thank the fellow, my fellow commissioners for their teamwork, and it just is an honor to sit at this table with such good leaders in Pennsylvania County. There are a lot of people responsible for where I am now. Fred Ingram was the board of supervisors, appointed me in 2008, and then Jerry Hagelman reappointed me in 212, and again in 216. And Ben Farmer, my present supervisor, appointed me this year for next four years. And I appreciate Mr. Farmer's confidence in me. I appreciate the board of supervisors for their approval of the nomination, and I will do what I can to serve not only my district, Callens, Gretna citizens, but the citizens of Pennsylvania County. Thank you very much. Look forward to working with all of you again.
Thank you, Ms. Mies. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, and to make recommendations to the board of supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:05, case R-20-015 is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-20-015, Joseph and Robin Motley have petitioned to rezone 4.018 acres located on Chalk Level Road in the Banister Election District, from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, to combine with their adjacent parcels of land zoned R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that Mr. Motley is here, but if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them the best that I can.
All right. Any question for? I mean, if anybody knows that Motley there, this is right across from it, and that if you're going from A1 to R1, but it's his residence, I think, if he's ready to do it. And I'm very familiar with the district as well as, I'm sure, Ms. Henderson. No one has signed up to speak on this case, has anyone did not have opportunity to sign up, wish to? Has anybody wished to talk about it?
Looks like a sore thumb, doesn't it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. At 7:07, case R-20-015 is closed to public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Any discussions? If not, Ms. Henderson.
All right, Mr. Chairman. I have not received any calls or emails in opposition to this, this case. So in the case of R20-015, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the board of supervisors that the requested property be rezoned from A1 to R1.
Motion by Ms. Henderson to make motion to board of supervisors, the zoning be changed from A1 to R1, the second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stowe, any discussions? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case R-20-015, by vote of seven four zero against, one absent, recommend to the board of supervisors, the zoning be changed from A1 to R1. 7:08, case S-20-010 is open to public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S-20-010, Luffman Purtle Real Estate LLC, has petition for a special use permit on a total of 1.47 acres located on Franklin Turnpike in the Westover Election District for a kennel for boarding dogs. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Laura Huffman and Ms. Lisa Purtle are here to represent the petition.
Ms. Love. Will you please come forward? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much for having us. I had sent an email out to everyone that I hoped would kind of explain everything, kind of jumpstart the process, but in essence, we're already at that location. We are right next door at Mount Herman Animal Medical Center. I'm a veterinarian in this community, and I've been here for about 25 years. We purchased that property at Mount Herman, at the Mount Herman Animal Medical Center site, about two years ago, but of course, Dr. Lynn Beard had been running that practice as an animal hospital for the last 30 years. Prior to that, Dr. Jeff Smith had been doing a doggy daycare kennel operation out of there as well. So it's essentially the same type of operation. We've just outgrown our site, and the property adjacent to it has come on the market. It's a small, thin lot that is probably not appealing to anyone but us who are next door to it. But what we need is, we have a great outdoor space for the dogs where we are. We need an indoor doggy daycare space, because when it's too hot, or it's too cold, or it's rainy, we have a very cramped location. We have no room for expansion where we are. So we need a quiet place to move the dogs. At our other, at our other location at Animal Medical Center, we rotate the dogs, you know, every two hours, they go in, they go out, they go in, they go out. We don't really have a great inside space there, because we just don't have the space. So if we could buy that little small home and gut it and refurbish it for doggy daycare, for inside doggy daycare, then we would build a, like basically a channel run, like you would have for cattle, that would go from our existing fenced-in yard to that home to keep the dogs safe and off of 41, then when it's hot, when it's cold, when it's rainy, or just on a rotating basis, the dogs can kind of come in for some inside time. And so that's what we really need is, and as I've outlined in the, in the email, we're not, we haven't, we're not asking to do anything that we're already not doing. We just need an inside space to make the dogs more comfortable, and also, if the problem is noise opposition, it'll actually make the noise level on the outside go down, because the dogs will be inside more than they are outside. There's no other boarding facility like that in that area. The other ones are Family Vet in Central Danville, Animal Medical Center in Central Danville, and Hollywood Pets that we're all in a stone's throw down in downtown Danville. So the people from 41 are driving, you know, all the way down into those other facilities, when a lot of them work in this area. So they've asked for that. That's a, that's a much needed thing, you know, kind of a yuppie thing right now with dogs and young, single families, people who have two incomes, they don't have any children, they want their dogs to be able to be played with. We are a growing company. We employ eight full-time employees now, and we're up about 100% over last year. So we're, we're doing very well at that site. We would just like to continue our expansion. And again, we're maxed out at our current location. We really can't, we can't make this any bigger without getting that next property next door. Some other things that I would like for you to understand is that the dogs are never outside unattended, and we're never outside before 7:30 or after 5:30 in the evening. So I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Did I understand you that this property, it will not be fenced in? The, the, the house is what you?
The house is what we, the house is what we're interested in. We already have a really nice outdoor space behind the clinic that we've Astro Turfed and put a lot of money into. Now, we will have to have a small area for dogs to just go outside to go to the bathroom, but it's not a play area. It's, that would be a leash walk, take the dog to the potty and back inside. But of course, we always want to protect the animals from 41. We can't let them just be on a leash. They've got to be within the confines of a fence, so that no one gets off a leash and gets hit by a car. But no play area there, it would not be loud there.
So when the dogs go outside, they will be on a leash with an attendant?
That's correct. They go outside, they potty, and they come back in. There would be no communal play. We're not going to have a big area. It would literally just be, again, we don't want to double spend our expenses, so we don't want to have a big fenced-in area there. We have a really nice fenced-in area adjacent to the clinic. So we don't, there's no reason for us to have an outside play area there. We've got a great, we don't want to double dip, basically.
That you will renovate the house, is that correct?
The house is going to have to, you know, it's got individual rooms, and it needs to, you know, we need a bigger space for the dogs. You know, it's got, it's got a kitchen. We don't need a kitchen, you know, we need a bathroom for the attendant to use, but other than that, we just need the individual rooms. Now, we would keep some individual rooms, because we keep the small dogs separate from the large dogs, you know, Maltese can't play with a Labrador. But, and then they'd have two little separate gates that went out to a small, little separate area to go potty in and back inside.
Doc, are you, are you telling us that they're going to stay in the house, except when the individuals curse them outside to use the potty?
What I'm saying is that we have an indoor doggy day, we already have our outdoor doggy daycare space, so this, this space would operate as, as two, as, as two things. One would be potential for boarding in the future, although we have boarding already at our current location. But what we're mainly interested in is our doggy daycare expansion. So the dogs right now are playing outside at the Mount Herman Animal Medical Center right next door. When it's hot, or cold, or rainy, they come inside to a little tiny area that's probably about a third of the length of this space in the middle. And so that's, that's too small of a space for the dogs to come in and get any kind of comfort inside. So what we'd like to do is be able to have them be able to go into the house and kind of relax, and, you know, you can paint it up with murals on the wall and make it kind of homey for people. Now, typical boarding dogs do stay inside all the time, and only go out to the potty and back inside. That's the way most boarding facilities are in America. And that's the way, you know, different people choose for different things. So a lot of small breed dog owners really don't like their dogs to go outside. They want them to be clean, and they, you know, they have the nice long, pretty feathers, and they don't want them to be outside at all. Whereas a Labrador owner likes them to go play during the day and sleep hard at night. So the small dogs would stay in that house pretty much all the time, out to, out on the leash to a potty and back inside. The owners don't want them out. But the large dogs would go to the doggy daycare facility adjacent to the, this, this building we're asking to buy, and go play all day, and then come back and go to sleep there.
Mr. Chairman? Okay. Do you live there?
I don't live there, no. I live, I live out on 58 West.
Okay. Any of the employees, do they stay there overnight?
No, there's no employees that stay there overnight.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Reason I'm asking, we've gotten calls from neighbors that do live there.
Yeah, and, and.
And we was, you know, concerned over the noise, and are they, and I'll ask Karen and them too, are they fully in compliance with everything right now, or are they?
Their existing operation is grandfathered, and so the fencing that's there was there when the previous business was in operation. We've gone back and looked at the aerials. She just said that they were doing boarding. It was a vet. You know, they had the doggy daycare with the previous operation. That was in operation before zoning code was adopted, so that's, those are all grandfathered uses.
Okay.
We have, we have received complaints from those apartments that are behind that building, but to be honest with you, the complaints aren't valid, because people are complaining that the dogs are barking at night, and they're not outside at night. I don't know whose dogs are barking at night, but those dogs are all inside a very, you can't even get a cell phone signal inside. You are not going to hear those dogs bark outside that building. So I think maybe some people are confused. They think those dogs are barking at nine and 10 o'clock at night, but the last time those dogs go potty is 5:30 in the evening. They don't go back outside again until 7:30 in the morning.
Any other questions? We, I do have people signed up, so you'll get the chance to come back.
Okay.
And rebook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maurice Lover, now I hope I pronounced that correct. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Maurice Lover, live on 1045 Mount Herman Circle, and I'm here in opposition of what this lady just discussed. I live directly behind the animal center. I've never seen a dog on a leash. They're all running around in that chain, in, or the chain link fence. Some days, the noise is, is just unbelievable. I can hear the dogs over top of my TV. They have, I've, I've got a sleep disorder. Sometimes it's two or three o'clock in the morning before I get to bed, and I've had the dogs to wake me at 8:30 in the morning. So they're out before 10:30, and they're out at different periods throughout the day. And on the weekends, they have somebody coming in to let them out. And of course, when one dog starts barking, they all want to compete with each other. And we're worried, Ms. Ragsdale has got the petition that I passed around to the neighborhood, and I think we've got like 13 neighbors that are against it, and we just want peace and quiet. That's, that's why we move where we move. That's all we want, and the dog barking is, is just, some days it's terrible. And once this COVID thing is over, we feel like that there's going to be more dogs, they want to expand to house more dogs, and of course, that's going to create more barking. So that's why I'm here. Thank you for your time.
Any question for? Thank you, sir. Mr. Ron Skyes, good evening again, welcome. Thank you for coming.
First, I want to thank you all for, for serving on the commission. I know how hard these things are. Only reason I'm here, I wanted to voice some concerns. I've gotten plenty of phone calls on the complaints with the noise on the current facility. And just going back in, in history, I initially supported the code changes to allow them to expand, and at the time, I did a, a tour of the facility, and the one question I had, have you gotten any noise complaints, or the neighbors happy with this? And the comment back to me was, yes, we're, the neighbors are very happy with, with the facility. So to me, as soon as we did the code change, it seemed we, we got inundated with, with complaints, and so that's, that's why I'm kind of here today to voice those concerns. I don't want to say I'm opposed to this project, but if we could do something, I don't know if there's any way to do a proffer, to put up some kind of sound barrier at the minimum, because, because of the grandfathered status of this facility, we can't really do anything from the county perspective to enforce anything. But if, if you could maybe get at least a proffer, if you're going to approve this, to have them put up some kind of sound barrier. I don't know what, what it would take. It's pretty loud. I don't know if any of you guys toured, or just went and parked beside the facility during the day when the dogs are out. It's pretty loud. So it's up to you guys, that's, that's what you're here on this commission for, but I just want to make sure, you know, that a lot of the citizens are upset with this, and, and I get to hear it, and I know some of the other board members are hearing the same complaint. So you guys have any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Skyes, this was the first I've heard that the dogs will not be allowed on this property unless they on lease. Were you aware of this until tonight?
Well, when I toured it, the one time, the dogs were kind of free roaming within their, that fixed facility. So I, again, I don't, I don't know what the day-to-day operations. I haven't really been back over there since, that was probably six months ago, when we were doing the initial code change. And again, if I'd had some complaints at that time, I probably would not have approved the code change, unless there was something done about the sound. I mean, if you look at how close that facility is to the residential line, it's, I, I said it can't be more than 100 feet, if that. And that, you know, I think even today's code, we've got, it's a different number, 500 to 200 feet from the line. So it's a big difference in, because they're grandfathered, we really can't do anything about it. And that goes back to the noise levels as well. If she was just a regular resident with a dog barking, or multiple dogs barking, we could go in and try to get that fixed as well. She could get a nuisance ticket for that, and then we can't do anything, because she's a, a facility, and so our hands are tied at our level, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harker.
So tell me if I'm wrong in saying this, but it sounds like the complaints are with the existing facility, on the existing property that's already grandfathered in.
Correct. And I think if you add more dogs to the mix, they're obviously going to use the same outdoor facility to allow those dogs to get the exercise. So again, you're going to multiply the noise level probably, but I don't know, I don't know what the day-to-day operations are. All I know is the complaints from the residents is pretty strong, some to take into consideration as far as I'm concerned.
Certainly. So I'm also understanding, or what I heard, I may have heard wrong, and you might correct me, the new facility is going to be an indoor facility.
That's right. And actually, it would lessen the amount of dogs that are in the outside facility. It'll actually lower the noise at that, at that existing location. Right now, again, the dogs stay outside more than we would like them to, because we do not have a proper indoor space with them. If you give us a proper indoor space, the dogs will actually be rotated inside if we're off, as the dogs like to be put two hours in, two hours out, throughout the day, throughout the hour.
Mr. Harker. Do you mind waiting till she comes back?
Yes.
To ask these questions on it, please. Thank, excuse me, if I interrupt, thank you.
I just want to make sure I understood.
Right.
Anything else? I'll get out of your head. I don't want to hold, hold you all up tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ron.
Anyone else wish to address, that's who I have signed up, that wish to address the commissioners on this? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren, come in. Good evening, welcome.
I wasn't living on speaking, but.
Thank you.
I, I need some clarity, because I've gotten a lot of the calls.
Yes, sir.
And I, I heard you say that the big dogs in the new facility are going to be able to run through a run into the outdoor facility, that you exist, that you currently have.
No, they have to be, they still have to be hen walked. You can't have the dogs in a, in a, it's a protective shoe, like a cow shoe, but you have to leash walk the dogs from one facility to the other and bring them.
But you plan on bringing them from this new facility to your nice outdoor facility to playtime?
Back there to day and night.
I want to be clear, because I think the board was confused on that. She's saying that this new group of dogs will be using the existing facility for playtime, the bigger dogs.
That's the bigger dogs. They're back to the.
Okay. Because based on your question, I said, it seems like it's a little confusing, a little confusion to me, the way she presented it. Because she presented that, you know, they're going to be inside all the time, except when they need to defecate. But then she says they're going to go out for playtime. Well, it's already a problem. Unfortunately, I, you know, I'm a dog lover, big time dog lover.
Absolutely.
Got multiple dogs. But I went by your facility this morning, and at nine o'clock, I parked on the other side of the road, because I wanted to get my own view, not just listen to citizens. And it's, it's a problem. If I lived in that area, I'd be here complaining, in all due respect. And I certainly hope, because I'm such an advocate for businesses, that you're willing to work with the neighbors, to work out a solution, to be mutually beneficial, because I think you provide a good service. I really do. But I think it's only fair to, the citizens that are surrounded, be treated fairly too. So thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Bob.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If not, Ms. Lover.
So just to clarify, again, I fully believe that to give us an indoor space will lower the sound at the existing facility, but just like Mr. Skyes was talking about, we're not really talking about the existing facility. That's, that is grandfathered in. It's been a veterinary hospital. It's, we've had doggy daycare there for years and years, and it's been there long before those apartment complexes were there. Not that I want to negate the fact that, you know, my dad had a sleeping disorder, and it was important for him to get asleep. I get all that. You know, we do have to try to find a, a balance between residential and business. That business was there before, and it operated as a veterinary clinic before. There were always dogs barking at that facility. When those apartments were built, there were dogs barking at that facility. When Dr. Jeff Smith owned the facility, he did doggy daycare there for five or six years with many more dogs than we have, because he had an established business. Lots of times, there's only seven or eight dogs out in that doggy daycare facility. I have a lot of clients that have more than seven or eight dogs, to be honest. And again, our dogs are put up between the hours of 5:30 PM to 7:30 AM. They are let out, and if you've had dogs, you know that first morning, you're going to have a, it's like toddlers, they're going to get their wiggles out, they're going to scream and holler, and then they're going to settle back down. And they're going to be pretty quiet for the remainder of the day, until it's pickup time, when they're, when they see mom and daddy, and then they get excited again. Is there barking going on all, all the time? There absolutely would not be. The dogs are tired. We have 40 to 60 dogs at Animal Medical Center Doggy Daycare, and the only really loud time would be 7:30 to 9:00 AM, because that's when everybody's dropping off, and 4:30 to 6:00, and everybody's picking back up. The dogs are quite quiet the rest of the time, because they're, it's hot outside, they're, they're pooped, they've already gotten their wiggles out. I, I'm no engineer, I have no idea how to soundproof anything. But I don't want, the new facility is different than the old facility. The new permit would be different than the old permit. The old permit is grandfathered in. The new permit, again, is, is going to be in a nice, quiet area. There's, it sounds like all the complaints are about the existing facility, and don't get me wrong, I don't, I want to be a good neighbor, but that doesn't have anything to do with the new facility. The new facility is actually going to help that, and the new facility is going to be a nice, quiet area. The dogs are going to be inside there, going leash walked back to the other area, one at a time. You're not going to have inner dog mingling and barking and all that kind of stuff going on. So I know it's difficult to understand the layout of everything, and maybe I should have, I'm not a very good drawer, but maybe I should have drawn out what we were thinking of. But, you know, I'll be happy to send that out to everybody, and you can table it and relook at everything later. But, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, but we want to expand our business.
Mr. Harker.
How long has it been since the other business ceased operation?
We took it over two years ago. There was a period of six months where no one was in the building, but that was, in the last 35 years, it's been a veterinary hospital for the entire time, except for those six months.
The doggy daycare facility next door has been in use for?
No, no, no. The doggy daycare is relatively new in veterinary medicine. I'm going to say doggy daycare has existed there for seven or eight years.
And you said Dr. Jeff?
Dr. Jeff Smith at Family Vet.
He ran a similar business?
Yeah.
To what you're proposing to do there?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, exactly what we're doing now is what was in that facility before.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, what is the capacity? How many dogs are you allowing?
There's no, there's no veterinary standards. We, you know, right now, in the boarding facility. We, you know, right now, in the boarding facility, we only can probably do twenty dogs at a time. The boarding facility at that existing location with runs and cages is quite small. Um, if we got the house, we could probably board an additional fifteen dogs. The house is not very big. It's probably a one thousand square foot home. Um, so, it would increase our boarding capacity from about twenty dogs to thirty dogs. Now, some people, uh, board their dogs and then their dogs go outside to play while their dogs are boarding. And other people drop their dogs off every morning and pick their dogs back up every evening, like school teachers or, we have a lot of school teachers and nurses. So, they drop their dogs off, doctors, pick them back up in the evening. So, besides the boarding dogs, which typically veterinary clinics are only very busy in boarding during the summer months. During the rest of the months, you know, we're going to have seventy-five percent of our kennels are going to be open. Because people aren't going on vacation.
Excuse me, you don't have a cutoff number?
No, because we haven't reached that. You know, our business isn't anywhere near what it, what it could be. So, we haven't crossed those bridges, so to speak. We know that there'll be a number, an infinite number of cages, but doggy daycare space, typically, if I had to go by what we use at, uh, at Animal Medical Center, for the space we have at, at, uh, Mount Herman, the most animals we could probably have out there will be about twenty because it's about a third of the space and we can get up to sixty of it at Animal Medical Center.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes, ma'am. Um, you know, besides being grandfathered in, which I realize that, that is, but, you know, we, we've heard witness tonight. Uh, we've listened, we know it's a petition going around. Um, what would you be willing to do as a proffer? Put up, uh, fence, put up trees?
You know, there's a, there's a fence line there now. I don't, I don't know enough about it to, to know what the expense is, really.
When you say fence line, what have you got?
Um, well, we just have a chain-linked fence. But, there's a, there's a tree line between us and the thing.
Something solid is what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
And Leland Cypress maybe?
Right, right. We did that at Animal Medical Center as well, um, in a parking lot-type area.
Would, would you be willing to put that in a proffer?
Um, sure, I would have to look at the expenses of, of doing it, but, I mean, we've got no problem. Again, we want to be a good neighbor. We don't, I mean, you know, again, our client base is in the Mount Herman area. We don't want to alienate our client base.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I interject, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, proffers are voluntary statements by tenants that follow the resigns. This is a special use.
Mm-hmm.
You can, you, you all are just giving a recommendation.
Right, yeah, I realize that.
Conditions follow S U Ps. As long as they're reasonable and related to the property, you can require them to do something.
Okay.
To, in order for them to get the S U P.
Very good. They got to go for B Z A as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
And they, this is going, special use, B Z A?
So, B Z A, um, you can prove it, you can disprove it, you can, she can draw a table, bring you back some drawings or so, or some more information to make you more comfortable with your decision. Um, yeah, you have some options.
Any other? Mr. Haymore?
No.
Thank you. You have anything else you'd like to present to us?
No, sir. Like I said, we're, we're not unreasonable. I, I, it's outside of my scope. I don't, I don't know, cost-wise, what, I don't want to say that we have the economic, you know, that we can do something we can't do. I, I would need to have more information about it first.
Thank you. It's seven thirty-three, case S dash twenty dash oh one oh is closed to public hearing. Any discussions, Mr. Haymore?
Mr. Chairman, when, uh, I, uh, accepted this position, I told my supervisor that, uh, in my opinion, the community which was involved would, uh, would speak because I had been before the, uh, Planning Commission on two occasions that, uh, in opposition to, uh, something was going on near my place. And I stated that, uh, I might know what is good for, uh, my particular locality, but when it come to other localities, I thought the people, uh, of the, uh, community knew what was good for them and what was not. And, uh, I, uh, I, I've had to take a stand on a couple of things. When you live in a country, uh, your next-door neighbor might be three miles away, but, uh, I know you all recall the, uh, situation with Dollar General on the, uh, Mount Cross Road. That involved, uh, a neighbor of mine that, uh, that opposed that because of about thirty-five, forty people came down and said they wanted no part of, of Dollar General in their community. So, based on my, uh, my feelings and, uh, and what's, uh, been brought to my attention, phone calls and the, uh, petition, in case S twenty zero one zero, I move that we deny the special use permit for kennel and boarding dogs.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Haymore, second by Mr. Dudley, to recommend to the Board of, uh, Zoning Appeals to deny this special use permit for a kennel. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Ragsdale, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn? Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Case S dash twenty dash oh one oh by vote of seven four zero against one absent, recommend to the Board of Zone Appeals that they deny a special use permit for a kennel for boarding dogs. That concludes the public hearings. Uh, Ms. Ragsdale, uh, Mr. Hunt, any old business? Any new business?
We have.
How many next month?
Seven cases next month.
Do you know that, are you familiar with the districts? Can you?
There's a pretty broad span. I can't remember off the top of my.
They'll show up in the mail either way, right?
Yeah.
We all will be here the next month.
Yes.
Yeah. Very good.
Yep.
The seven thirty-sixth meeting of jurors. Thank y'all for coming. Have a safe trip.